Okay, we're going to call the Santa Barbara City Council Meeting of November 7th, 2006 to order, please. Will you stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, free, just, and right.
Will you call the roll, please? Councilmember Barnwell?
Here.
Falcone?
Here.
Horton?
Here.
House? Schneider? Williams? Mayor Bloom? Here. Councilmembers House and Schneider are off to Rail-volution. It's very hard to say Rail-volution, which is, it's a conference about commuter rail and that sort of thing. And so they're in Chicago doing that, which is a very good thing, and we hope that everybody gets out there and votes today. And that's all I'll say about that. Could you read item number one, please? I'll come down there.
Item number one, Presentation of Looking Good Santa Barbara Certificates.
Okay. And we have Mr. Nisich. Should I come down there?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, we're going to give some recognition to some people in the community who work very hard helping the rest of us look good, hence the name Looking Good Santa Barbara. But before I do that, introduce the executive coordinator, I thought, just for the council and the people at home, make a point, say that Looking Good Santa Barbara is a city program that exists within the Division, Environmental Services Division, the Public Works Department, and was founded in 1989 by a council who decided, maybe by working together with a group of city staff, volunteers, residents, and others, that we could maybe do a little bit better job keeping the city clean and appearance up in all areas. So since then, they've been working, and they work very hard. The group meets monthly and puts together on programs and has all these other programs for cleanup, litter, and graffiti, and et cetera. So today, we want to recognize some people for continuing support, and continuing support, because there's actually quite a few of them. So with that, I'd like to introduce Lorraine Cruz Carpenter, our executive coordinator, who can introduce the groups and help you give out the certificates. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Bloom and Council. As Mr. Nisich said, we would like to thank a group of volunteers that has been volunteering with Looking Good over the last four years, and I have been honored to work with this group. First, we'll go ahead and hand out the certificates, but in a moment, I'll go ahead and go over quickly the history of the group and their participation. But this group has been really dedicated to helping us with community cleanups. As you'll see the statistics in a bit, just how much they've helped us clean up, and we're just honored to work with this group.
Should we start here?
Sure. And I should note that this is a group of 10 local churches here in our community.
Which is very wonderful. So Shoreline Community Church? I'm not sure if they're all here.
Shoreline Community Church?
Yeah, it's been off.
We'll just go on as we go.
Santa Barbara Community Church?
Santa Barbara Community Church?
New Life?
I know we have New Life Church here, and we have their pastor Ross here. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Calvary Chapel? We've got a thousand members.
Right. Right. I know. They're busy doing work. Community Covenant Church?
Montecito Covenant?
Montecito?
Coast Church?
South Coast, okay.
Calvary Baptist?
Calvary Baptist?
Oh, yeah.
There we go. Thank you very much for your work and your service.
Free Methodist Church? And Santa Barbara Coast Community Church, if I may.
Okay. All right. Well, we must have... Thank you very much. Let me see. I'm going to quickly go over some slides from the work that these groups have done. Even though some people couldn't make it today, we really appreciate their work, and I know we'll see them on the workdays.
Yeah.
Just very briefly, this group of 10 churches has been working with us over the past four years, and I'm going to quickly go over that history and how it started. In 2003, we were contacted by Calvary Chapel Church to do a community service project, and we jumped at the chance to work with them because they said they would have approximately 300 volunteers, and they wanted to do a project that would make a big impact. So staff came up with this project to work on the Annapamoo Bridge that was in disrepair for a long time. There was a lot of issues, graffiti, and just overall deterioration of that bridge. So what they did was they came in and painted the whole bridge, did a community cleanup around the bridge, and since then, that bridge has remained the same. We've had staff on that bridge working on it constantly, keeping it nice, and we've had the churches come back and do cleanups of that bridge. So that's the first initial cleanup we had with the church groups. The second slide shows the fact that in 2005, we had Dale Swanson from New Life Church contact us. He knew about the past activities with Calvary Chapel, and he said he had a group of 10 to 12 churches that wanted to come onboard and do the same type of activity and cleanup and contribute to the community and give back and make a big impact also. So what we did was we kind of expanded the cleanup. We did all kinds of different activities. We included recycling. We really made an effort to recycle any trash we had out there. We handed out information pieces to the community. We also did homeless cleanups and litter and graffiti cleanup, as you can see. And so we had a big west side cleanup, and we had approximately 450 volunteers. And then the following year, which was this year, we did a cleanup of the east side. So we went to the other side of town and did the same exact thing. We added some courtesy dumpsters for the community and basically cleaned up that area as well. And then I want to go over again, we just went over what churches those were, and we had those out. So those listed are the churches that have participated over the last four years with us, and we just really appreciate their commitment to our community. And really quickly, I want to last go over this, because these are really impressive numbers. Over the last three cleanups that we had with these groups, and in the first cleanup, we didn't even take some of these statistics. So this doesn't even include some of the statistics from the first cleanup, but 1,153 volunteers, 3,459 hours of work, one city bridge restored, that was the Annapamoo Bridge, two creek locations restored, that was in this last cleanup. We had 7,000 city hotline directories handed out to residents, 140 shopping carts retrieved, 146 city blocks cleaned, 9.65 tons of green waste collected, 12.07 tons of recyclables collected, 19.7 tons of trash collected, for a total of 41.47 tons of waste. So I think that's pretty impressive, and we could not have done it without these groups. And so I truly thank them, and I hope to see them back in the coming years.
Okay. Thank you very much. And you'll see that they get their certificates, right?
I sure will.
Okay, good. Thanks. Thank you. It's a great program. Okay?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I just wanted to reinforce one part of these cleanups. Most recently has been very effective graffiti removal kits. And so if you want to become a graffiti vigilante, then go see Lorraine.
That means taking it off, not putting it on.
You're right. You're getting rid of it.
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying that, Madam Mayor. It comes off very easily and safely, and you can do it yourself if you get a little kit.
There's a firefighter who lives on Cliff Drive, and he takes care of the electric box, you know, those big electric boxes next to the stoplight? And they used to always tag it, and they've stopped in the past year and a half. But he'll paint it if he sees it in the morning, and that's all you have to do, is just get rid of it as soon as possible. So thank you for your work, too. Appreciate it. Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Barnwell.
I'd like to give, since so many people watch this stuff, the...
Oh, the graffiti hotline.
The graffiti hotline number...
Good. I should have had it here.
Is 897-2513, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I just wanted to also say that you can, I think we still have the Adopt a Block program going on. The Adopt a Block is what Mr. Williams is referring to, where you can get a little kit of kind of removal stuff, and it just becomes your block, and you keep it clean. I am a proud father of two blocks myself. I've adopted two blocks. And just what you said, Madam Mayor, kept it clean. I also wanted to thank Marburg and the Borgatella Brothers for their work in hauling away all the trash that was just discussed right there. And also want to thank Lorraine for her work on cleaning up the creek. We got between six and sevens with the county on cleaning up the creek and cleaning up the graffiti, but we're working towards getting the creek bottom cleaned up as well. So I think Ms. Cruz Carpenter does a great job, and I wanted to say that out loud. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your program. Okay, item two?
Item number two, Employee Recognition Service Award Pins.
Okay, Mr. Armstrong?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you know, every month, we give service award pins to those employees who are celebrating significant anniversaries, and I wanted to read into the record those employees who are going to receive pins this month. All told, it's 14 employees representing 160 years of service with the city. With 25 years, Armand De La Rosa, who's a wastewater treatment plant operator in Public Works. With 20 years, Diana Palmer, who's the waterfront parking supervisor. With 15 years, Mark Howard, who's risk analyst in finance. Anthony Prieto, who's a streets maintenance crew leader in Public Works. And Michael Johnson, who's a water distribution operator in Public Works. With 10 years, Marcelo Lopez, the administrative services director. Brenda Monzer, who's the finance supervisor. James Willis, who's a police officer. Richard Alvarado, wastewater collection system supervisor in Public Works. And Mabel Shitowsky, who's the executive assistant at the airport. And with five years, Michelle Montez, an assistant city attorney one. Todd Johnson, a police officer. Ruben Gutierrez, who's a custodian at the library. And Marcy Laurent, who's administrative specialist in Parks and Rec.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Public comment, I've got five slips. We'll start with David Landecker, representing CPA, to be followed by Marilyn Gilbert and Julie Saltoon. There you go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I've given each of you a letter from CPA. First of all, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Barnwell for coming to the meeting of our land use committee, South Coast Land Use Committee, yesterday. An issue came up during our discussion, which I just wanted to bring to your attention and hope that we can get a little bit of action on it. And that is simply that what Mr. Barnwell said when he was presenting to us about form-based zoning is that the advantage of this is that we, as a community, can get what we want from our planning process, instead of always picking at the edges and saying, here's what we don't want, which is what CPA is sometimes accused of. What we wanted to say is, that's great. We've always been in favor of that. We're really in favor of citizens getting involved in the planning process and getting involved in putting down standards, zoning codes, et cetera. The only problem is when those get picked away at by modifications and variances on a continuing basis. Now, we don't have any problem with modifications occasionally, but what seems to be happening today is modifications are becoming a relatively routine part of the permitting process. And Mr. Barnwell indicated that he really wasn't terribly aware of how many modifications take place, because there aren't any reports to counsel on that. So we're simply asking that the planning department and the staff hearing officers make periodic reports, perhaps monthly, perhaps quarterly, you can determine what is appropriate, to the planning commission and the council, and through that, the public, simply saying how many of these hearings have taken place, as compared to how many applications are pending before them, how many modifications have indeed been granted, and in what areas. That will give all of us an opportunity to really see what's going on, what areas are continually being asked for modifications. And I don't know what the best way, and when it's appropriate, you can tell us how to present this, but I will make sure a copy of the letter gets to the Planning and Development Department and hope that you will act on it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Marilyn Gilbert, followed by Bob Hanson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. And I'd also like to invite to join me here Julie Saltoon, who's the executive director of the ADL, the Anti-Defamation League here in Santa Barbara. Thank you, Julie. I prepared, we've prepared some documents for you to look at. Maybe you'll take a quick look at them while we tell you what this is about, if I may give them to whomever.
Right here. Laurie, I'll take them for you.
The top one is for the mayor. The reason the top one is for the mayor, I must apologize, is the color copier went out while we were preparing these documents. And so those of you who would like to have a color copier later, please let me know, and we will provide the same. But so far, only the mayor has the color copies.
I'll share.
This is a wonderful program. All of you know how difficult it is, even in a city as wonderfully liberal and as... Oh, I shouldn't use that word. As wonderfully cohesive and as wonderfully impressive as Santa Barbara, but how difficult it is for people to come together. We tend to stay in our own small social groups. When you think about having a dinner party, you think about having people that you know, and you think about people who will go well together with one another. Therefore, we never get over those invisible barriers that separate us. And this program is designed to do the opposite. This program is designed to bring people together who have never sat and had dinner together before. Different races, different backgrounds, different cultures, different religions, or no religion, to be able to sit at a host dinner, six, eight, maybe 10 people, to have a social evening, but more than that, to be able to talk about themselves to one another. It's a nonjudgmental program. It's, I think, one of the most exciting programs the ADL has come up with. I invite each of you to put down that you would like to be a guest at such a dinner or a host of such a dinner, and the ADL is here to help you put together a dinner if you call up and say, I don't know who to invite. We're here to help you put together such a dinner. So if you have any questions, I'd like to address them to Ms. Saltoon.
Okay. Any questions? I think it's a wonderful program. It looks very exciting, because you get to meet all kinds of people, people from different backgrounds. Very good.
And it's one of our proactive ways to get everyone really on the same page and to get everyone to appreciate each other's diversity.
Yeah. It's very good. Thank you for bringing this to us.
A pleasure. Hope you enjoy it, and I hope you'll participate.
Thank you. Bob Hanson, followed by David Homeless.
How are you guys doing? Point of order here, it says on public comment that no individual speaker may speak more than one minute. It's printed in here, so we've got to change that. We get two minutes, right?
No, we're not going to change it, because that's in the city charter and all that, and I'm just being nicer to you than...
So I was at the county this morning, and they get a minute and a half, and I thought that wasn't enough time. But anyway, I talked to the lady from Looking Good Santa Barbara. She went out, and I said, you know, our gangs or whatever, they're doing graffiti. We just can't keep painting over. We need to sit there and have like a trade tech or somebody, let them, you know, have hope that they can maybe live in Santa Barbara. There's many, many jobs that pay $50 an hour, and they could learn those jobs and have hope. What we're giving them now is just paint over, push them around, and they finally might end up with maybe an $8 job or something like that. The homeless, I mentioned that to her too, saying, hey, there's lots of camps out there. I was in a camp just a couple hours ago. They're everywhere. We need to have shelters. We need to have these people offer them someplace to go. We need to be working with the police department, the school system, government, and citizens, and really looking at this and really keeping it real. Because right now, we have some shelters, they're really kind of programs, and then the winter shelter will kick in on December 1st to April 1st. This problem, this situation, whatever you want to call it, is big, and there's people sleeping on State Street. So, you know, I think that we really need to be down there on November 30th and get some bids in and try to buy the California Hotel. Sounds like it's going to be up on the chopping block. Maybe someone in the community could, you know, be down there and help us and get it for, you know, youth in our community and homeless and have a real center down there. Next door is Reagan Center and all, and he puts some of these people on the streets. But still, we need to have a positive thing going in our community. We need to be our logo, I think, Santa Barbara, Saint Barbara, Shelter From the Storm, and really helping, not Santa Barbara, the American Riviera, and selling out, which, that's where we're going. I mean, State Street, you like Disneyland, and we all love Santa Barbara, so we can work these things out. We need ideas, we need to work on them. Thank you.
Thank you. David, followed by Nancy McCready, will be our last speaker.
I guess you all know by now, my name's David Homeless. I haven't gotten none of the answers. I ain't going to profess to have any of them. The word "program," I think that's kind of harsh. I think it should be "help." Nobody likes to be told they're going to be programmed. Me personally, I'd run the other way. You tell me you're going to program me. I mean, I was in Marine Corps, I've been programmed enough. I agree with Mr. Hanson on the California thing. If we had some kind of day center or something that we could get these people to go to, then we'd probably have fewer problems on State Street. Maybe we could even reach some of these on a one-to-one basis. I mean, you don't have to have a trained counselor. You sit down, have a cup of coffee, smoke a cigarette with somebody if they smoke a cigarette, and find out, and everybody's got an interest in their brain. Once you find out what that is, you just play on it. And I will be back.
Thank you. Nancy McCready will be the last speaker.
Well, I really didn't need to see the need to speak here, because I just came up to watch David and Bob say what they had to say to you. But Bob has tried to talk me into telling you about what it's like to teach a singing class over at the Casas Branza, and to watch the people involved light up. So we're hoping that a lot more homeless can light up like that, and we would like to sing you a little song, because this is one of the songs I'm teaching the men.
Who knew that you could sing? It's great. You do it first.
(singing) Love, 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 love. People, we are made for love. Love each other as ourselves, for we are one.
Okay.
That's it. That's it.
Enough, enough. Thank you.
(singing) People, we were made for love.
Thank you, Bob. Actually, she has a nice voice. Okay. Councilmember Committee Assignment Reports, Mr. Barnwell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In reference to Mr. Landecker's comments, it was really an honor and a lot of fun to have a conversation this week with the CPA, talking about planning. His point was that, and I confess, they were saying that, I told them, we don't see any mods, and the planning commission doesn't see any mods either, because Bill Mahan was there, he said, we don't see them anymore, as you recall, as a result of some of our decisions. But apparently, there are some staff-level mods, so I will ask Mr. Armstrong, we'll follow up on that and see what they are. Some of you were also there along with me to the ADL fundraiser on Sunday night, and it was remarkable for me to see the ADL being so proactive. And, you know, when they first started out, they were in a defense mode years and years and years ago, trying to protect. But their programs now, I just want to compliment them on how proactive they are. And they spoke to this one, which I think I'd like to participate in, the idea of having dinner with someone that you've never known before. Anyway, it was an excellent dinner. I had the honor of going to the Bakara twice in one weekend, which, that's a long trip for me. I got my passport and everything ready, and I was able to make it both times. The Rape Crisis Center is having a celebration, I wanted everybody to know about, on Thursday, this Thursday, from 5:30 to 7:30 at their new offices at 433 East Cannon Perdido. There also is something of which I am very happy about, and the mayor will be making some introductory remarks. We're going to have an art show opening in the city hall, which I believe is the first time we've done this. It's going to be down in the main hall where the Colin Kimber Coopers were held. They've now gone on a national tour, and the show downstairs is photographs by veterans, and it's commemoration of Veterans Day. I believe, Madam Mayor, that your words are going to be at 4:15 on Thursday. Am I correct?
You're right.
Is that correct? So I would invite everyone to come and see that. We're beginning, we're embarking on a program to begin to hang art in the halls of the city hall for the general public to look at, which reminds me of Saturday as Veterans Day, to all the veterans, the tip of the hat. And there's two of us up here, Mr. Horton and I. And then lastly, I want to say I had a really remarkable experience at an event, which I have the brochure for. It's called the Susan Quinlan Doll and Teddy Bear Museum and Library. Have you people been to that? Oh, my God. Well, let me give you the address. It's 121 West Cannon Perdido, and it is, this is one of these treasures of Santa Barbara. It's the second-largest doll collection in the world, and it occupies this huge, big warehouse, which they've turned into these display cases, and she has dolls, stunning dolls from every country in the world throughout history, handmade dolls, production dolls, Disney dolls, Raggedy Ann dolls, dolls from Eastern Europe that are ancient. I mean, it's a really remarkable thing, and I would suggest that everyone go to it. I had no idea it was there, and then I went to this event, and I just thought I'd let everybody know it was really quite something. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
That's great. Mr. Williams?
Well, on Friday, I attended a meeting, we, every once in a while, and so did Madam Mayor, attend a meeting that is somewhat informal and on homeless issues, but one of the most important things that was mentioned there is the formation of a local chapter of Doctors Without Walls, which are, is doctors that are willing to take their equipment out and do street medicine out into the homeless population. And so if you are a physician or just have, or a nurse, or have some medical knowledge and want to learn more about street medicine, there is a training taking place this weekend, this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I think you don't have to go to all of them, and it's El Capitan Canyon. And if you want more information, you can call my office at 564-5325. On Wednesday morning, Councilmember Falcone and myself both did two different debates on propositions that are on the ballot this, today, Election Day. And I defended Proposition 87 as a good idea for alternative energies, and Councilmember Falcone indicated why Proposition 90 was such a bad idea and would cost taxpayers a huge amount of money. And both of those were with the Santa Barbara Industrial Association and at their economic summit. And there was also great presentations from a number of local businesses that have been able to really thrive in the county with clean manufacturing. So that was interesting, and all of them, of course, mentioned housing as being their toughest, toughest challenge. And speaking of election issues, the reason why I got in here three minutes late, Madam Mayor, is because I've been enthusiastically dragging folks out to vote since 6:00 AM. So, well, turnout is a little bit light out there, so I just want to encourage people, no matter what your views, to get out and vote today. And if you get out there and vote before the end of this council meeting, then you won't have me knocking on your door to bug you to go out and vote. So hopefully, that is an incentive to get out there and do it early before the rush.
Okay. Thank you. And if you have an absentee ballot you haven't mailed in, you can just walk into any polling place and give it to them. So that would be a good idea. Mr. Horton? No, because you have been away. So you haven't gone to anything, and that's fine.
Well, I would say that the Grand Canyon is as awe-inspiring as ever, and I highly recommend it.
Very good. Excellent. Ms. Falcone?
Thank you. Most of these things have been mentioned, but I did say that it was a great deal of fun and had a lot of enthusiastic people in the room at the Industrial Association lunch, where I think Mr. Williams debated Mr. Armandarez from Carpentaria, and who's also the Taxpayer Association Executive Director. I debated my girlfriend, Mike Stoker, who is as passionate as ever about the things that he believes in. But this is such a bad idea, this Proposition 90. It really is the anti-good-planning proposition. So anybody who cares about your community and good planning and having a voice in how your community grows and how your transportation networks and circulations work should be encouraged to vote no on this, as hopefully, everybody's going to go out and vote today. The Boys and Girls Club Dinner was really quite amazing. I'm always taken a bit aback by the number of people that come out all the time to really support these great causes that we have in Santa Barbara. That room on Saturday night for the Boys and Girls Club was filled to capacity at 450 or so, as was the room for the ADL reception. It was also another 450-some-odd people, maybe more. And they honored Tom Parker from the Hutton Foundation, the Gersh Hochman families, for all of their environmental good works that they have done in this community, and another woman, whose name escapes me, I apologize, she's a teacher in town, with special education programs, and that's hard, I know. I used to do that. I would love to participate in this program that the ADL has going, although in this job, you tend to eat meals on a frequent basis with people you've never met before. So that's one of the upshots, one of the good things about this job. But hey, you know, you can always meet more and learn more, so I look forward to that and eat more, unfortunately, yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, just two things that weren't mentioned. Last night, the Dance Alliance presented scholarships to dancers, there were 11 of them, from about nine years old, eight or nine years old, up to high, through high school. And they give them scholarships so that they can take their dance lessons. And it was very heartwarming. They didn't have a place to do it this year. And they didn't have any kind of recital they were doing, so we let them use Room 15. And they were just thrilled to, most of them had never been in City Hall, and I thought that was kind of cute, because that means we haven't bothered them, or they would have been right down here telling us what to do. But, but anyway, we loaned them Room 15, and so 11 of them got scholarships, and that's a very good thing. And then this morning, I spent four hours in class. There was a LEAP class for employees, and I'll tell you, I thought, "Four hours? How am I going to stay awake?" No problem. It was very entertaining, very, very wonderful in that I learned a lot, and at the same time, just had a great time. It was on sustainability, it's by our new Sustainability Coordinator, Nina Johnson, and Ed France, who's very funny. So we had a great time, and I learned a lot, and I encourage any of you to go. I think the next one is November, I want to say 15th, but you can ask and, and find out. It's very good. Well worth it. Also, this month is Native Heritage, American Heritage Month, and so I am going up to the Chumash Casino on Thursday to deliver a proclamation for Native American Heritage Month. And then on, I think Mr. Barnwell mentioned Veterans Day, this, actually, Veterans Day is always on the 11th day of the 11th month, because it was in 19, was it 11? The armistice? No, there's something about the year.
Well, the Surrender of Germany was signed, the 11th day, the 11th month, and the 11th hour.
There it is.
To end World War I.
There it is.
The war to end all wars.
Yeah, right. But anyway, there's going to be a ceremony at 9:00 AM on Veterans Day at the Santa Barbara Cemetery, and then there will be one down at the Veterans Memorial Building at 11:00. And anybody can come at any time to see the artwork downstairs. It's already up, and it's really wonderful. Okay, Consent Calendar, items three through 10, you have two to read. Will you please go ahead?
Item number five, introduction of ordinance for lease agreement with Char West, including recommendation B, introduced and subsequently adopted by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving a five-year lease agreement with one five-year option with John K. Williams Incorporated doing business as Char West, commencing on December 14, 2006, at a rent of $3,466 per month, or 11.4% of gross sales, whichever is greater, for a 1,069 square foot restaurant and office space located at 221 Sterns Wharf. Item number six, introduction of ordinance for lease agreement with Great Pacific Ice Cream Company, including recommendation B, introduced and subsequently adopted by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of City of Santa Barbara approving a five-year lease agreement with one five-year option with John K. Williams Incorporated doing business as Great Pacific Ice Cream Company, commencing on December 14, 2006, at a rent of $3,458 per month, or 15% of gross sales, whichever is greater, for a 395 square foot ice cream shop located at 219 A Sterns Wharf.
Okay. That's reading by title only. We'll wait for the reading. Would you like to?
I was going to move, I was going to move the consent calendar.
Okay. Okay. I don't think anything needs to be taken off. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Very good. Item 11, please.
Item 11, Save a Life Foundation.
Okay. And this is the Fire Chief. Actually, I met the fellow that does Save a Life Foundation in Washington, DC, at Conference of Mayors. And I thank Captain, or Fire Chief Prince for following through with this.
Thank you, Mayor Bloom, members of council. This is a, kind of a nice opportunity for us to talk about extending our public outreach efforts in the public schools. And so today, we're asking that you authorize me to execute a memo understanding with the Save a Life Foundation as it pertains to providing life-saving training to fourth and fifth graders in our local public schools. And just as the mayor knows, and by way of background, last year, we, the Fire Department and the Save a Life Foundation did a demonstration project at Roosevelt School, and we taught fifth graders some basic life-saving techniques. And with the idea that they were, the foundation was hoping that we would consider being the first city in California to introduce this program into the public school system. And the, the demonstration was considered to be successful, and we're ready to implement the program now. And so for the last few months, we've been working on this memorandum of understanding and getting our respective responsibilities figured out between the foundation and the City Fire Department. But who is Save a Life Foundation? That might be a question that you have. They have a really good website. It's savelifefoundation.org. But they're a nonprofit, a national nonprofit, and they're out of Chicago. And for, since 1993, they've trained almost a million kids on basic life-saving techniques in elementary schools. And they provide instructional materials, they try to use local EMS and fire staff to actually go out into the schools and teach a one-hour course. And it's been highly successful. And we actually have, the, the foundation provides a workbook that we leave with the kids. They work through the workbook, and then they get to take the book home. And our commitment, this first year, is kind of a pilot year, is to go in and teach all fourth and fifth graders in our local schools, this one-hour class. We've had, we've got actually 10 instructors that have been trained by Save a Life Foundation that are ready to go. They have their instructors manuals. And it's, the idea is to teach the kids how to not only do the Heimlich maneuver, but how to recognize an emergency, how to use 911, some real basic life-saving techniques, how to do rescue breathing and that sort of thing. And have actually had quite a few success stories throughout the nation since this started. We're excited to get the program going. We have two classes tentatively scheduled later this month. But I'd be, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. It's a, it's a pretty straightforward program, but I'm ready to answer questions.
Okay. Mr. Horton?
Chief, I read this, and I thought it was a really super idea. I'm a county commissioner for First Five of California, and I realize that the group that you're working with is a little bit older than First Five, but I wonder, is there any chance of bringing this program to the kids that are a little bit younger? It seems to me that maybe some of it would be over their heads, but possibly the 911 dialing or something could, could work. And we do have a board meeting coming up in a couple, three weeks, and could you just explore that a little bit for me?
Yes, actually, I found out, I did some more research, found out that they have a program for kindergarten through second grade, which is a half-hour course instead of an hour course. And it's age-specific material, it's not quite as comprehensive. And this first year, we have some, a pretty good idea of what our costs are going to be to deliver this training. It's a natural extension of our public education program. But to extend it further, if we had adequate funding, we could probably go in and actually take care of the younger kids. Right now, we use, we have third graders that were doing the Fire Safe House. We've been doing that for years and years. And this will get us, this program will get us into the fourth and fifth grades. If we wanted to go earlier than that, into the kindergarten, first and second grades, if, again, through First Five, that might be a great partnership.
Maybe you and I could meet offline and see if I could bring this to the board's attention. I think it's early December, and I know there's some unallocated funds sitting in there somewhere, so.
Yeah, I could, I could help you frame what that project would look like for them.
Okay. Good. No other questions from anybody? It's a great, it's a great program, and I know it will save some lives. Some of those kids are, will be at Thanksgiving dinner, and somebody will choke, and they'll know right away what to do. It's wonderful.
Thank you, Mayor.
I would move that we authorize the chief to execute a memorandum of understanding.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12. You know, while we're shifting, just for a second, in this morning, I'm so full of all the sustainability stuff. This morning's meeting, they were talking about the new Christmas lights that are LED lights. And I thought, how, you must love that, because this is, they don't get hot at all. They're not, they're not the kind, the incandescent things. They, they don't get hot at all. It's a chemical thing.
Did Mike Grimes demonstrate that for you?
He had them all over him. It was, I shouldn't tell them, because they might go to the, yes, but it must be wonderful.
It is. It'll, it'll probably prevent a lot of fires in the future. It's a great, a great innovation.
Yeah, yeah. Because we normally have Christmas tree fires at Christmas, and that'll stop that. That's great. Anyway.
Thank you.
Item number 12, please.
Item number 12, Capital Improvement Projects First Quarter Report for Fiscal Year 2007.
Okay.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, this is Pat Kelly, Assistant Public Works Director, City Engineer. And I have my quarterly presentation regarding the update of the city's capital improvement projects, focusing on the first quarter of this fiscal year. This presentation, I've changed it a little bit around from what I've done in the past, focusing first on design status, and then moving on to projects that we completed, and then finally wrapping up with projects in construction, and then a little video of some of the summary of presentations that have been made over the years regarding Sheffield Reservoir. So we have currently 40 projects in design that are managed in Public Works Engineering. And of course, there's many other projects in progress throughout the city. And then as we progress through this fiscal year, I'll be bringing more and more of those to the attention of council as part of this presentation. Total value of all those projects is over $181 million. Much of that is out at the airport, especially regarding the terminal, which we're familiar with. Right now, one of the key projects that's in design is the runway relocation, where essentially provides, provides thousand-foot safety areas on either side of the runway. I'll be talking later about the recently relocated creeks here. Here is a, one of the old site plan of the airline terminal. Recently, we've made a lot of progress working with the Design Subcommittee to comply with comments from council, the Historic Landmarks Commission, and ABR, to look at moving the old terminal, the existing terminal, over here. And also, we're looking very carefully at improving and maximizing the green features of the building, or LEEDs, Leadership and Engineering and Environmental Design features of the project. We're scheduled to bring back to council on December the 19th that progress. Here is the consolidated rental facility. It's on the, I think it's off Lopez Road. It's a function that is currently accommodated at, or adjacent to the existing terminal, and this is just like the site plan. So it's part of the conceptual design that we're at this point. It is a lot more than it may appear. It's a four-and-a-half-billion-dollar facility. And so it will include as part of the project, you know, stormwater management and green building features when it's done. It'll be paid for as part of the rental, car rental fees at the site. And we're making more progress on that. Taxiway B realignment, you're familiar with the major runway here, and this is to improve the alignment on-site. It is a $1.32 million project, and it will significantly increase the operational efficiency out at the airport. And it will be minimize intrusions across the main runway and improve safety in general out of the site. Here's one of the very interesting projects that Creeks Division has. This is at the tail end of, this Old Mission Creek, at the tail end of San Pascual, in this dip of an area where the, not really abandoned, but Old Figaroa Street right-of-way is existing. Correo is up here, and San Pascual is over here. The intent of the project is to take the runoff that comes out of Bonnet Park, and before it goes into the Mission Creek Trappazootal Concrete Channel, an opportunity to provide detention, and will provide water quality features as part of that detention. And that project is approximately $1.4 million. Here's the Cabrillo Bridge project. It's a project that we have to do because of the structural deterioration of the bridge. We have a grant from Federal Highway Administration, administrated through Caltrans, for a total of $20 million. It's quite a significant project. Part of it will include removing and replacing the bike way, and we have a 16-inch high-pressure gas line we have to deal with. We'll also be constructing the channel between Cabrillo and State Street. It will incorporate the key features that were approved recently as part of the Lower Mission Creek project, some features from the Tidewater Gobi Management Plan, especially on the wing walls downstream. It's going to be chock-full of features. And it's constructed, it's scheduled to start construction in the spring of '08. It's quite complex. We're working it to minimize the interference to the public and also the environment at large. So it's, it's kind of fun, but it's quite a challenge, too. Here is another one of our bridge projects, another grant project. This is at Haley de la Vina. It will be coordinated also with the Lower Mission Creek Project from the perspective of widening, widening the existing bridge to accommodate the Lower Mission Creek Project. Again, it's a complex project because it goes right through the middle of an intersection. And right now, we're wrapping up the, the environmental review. There's a lot of historic features we've had to deal with. It includes the acquisition of, of a property, several properties here at the corner, and looks like we may be involved in this one, too, temporarily, to acquire it. We're going to be using some of the RDA funds that have been allocated for Mission Creek to provide some additional aesthetic features beyond what would typically be funded by the state grant. And that was like part of the built-in element of that funding that was set aside. Ortega Bridge, this is also coordinated with the Lower Mission Creek Project on widening. In fact, we're, we've got permission to do an early acquisition on this house right here. And this provides an opportunity to hopefully coordinate, let me orient you here for a minute, I apologize. Here's Bass Street, and here's Ortega Street. To coordinate with a potential RDA project, again, part of that money set aside from Lower Mission Creek, to provide a pocket park. So between a coordination of the bridge project, which will be acquiring this house, this property, and the bridge widening, and the hopeful acquisition of these corner properties, we can coordinate a pocket park. And what I think really makes this interesting is that the RDA also has a project for a pedestrian corridor, the west downtown improvements, which I'll bring to you at a future quarterly meeting, to turn, provide a significant number of pedestrian features, street lighting, bullbouts, et cetera. That would be complimentary to this part of the neighborhood also. Here is the Mission Street Bike Way at 101. This is a 100% funded grant project. And right now, we've been watching the cost estimates very carefully, because costs have been quite a problem on many of our bids. But right now, the cost estimates are within target. The environmental is complete. The aesthetic review has been completed with ABR, and we're scheduled to start construction this spring. And what it will provide will be the, a bike way underneath the freeway at Mission Street and 101. Some other features will include, we'll be widening the sidewalk on either side of the bridge and the railroad structures to provide better pedestrian feeling, and also provide trees where currently the pedestrian is immediately adjacent to the, the cars. And plus, we'll have a bike way there. So we're really looking forward to moving forward on that project. This is a long-term project. This is a long-term project, Ortega Groundwater Treatment Plant. This is adjacent to the old CEC site on Ortega, just west of Garden Street, behind the survey office, and there's an existing treatment facility there that's being updated to be wrapped in with the city's long-term water supply program. Right now, the Water Resources Division is wrapping up the environmental documents to move forward with this, and this will take several years to follow through with. This is the San Roque Well, Phase 2. San Roque Well, you may recall, was, we re-drilled a new well there. It's at Cannon and Chuparosa in the San Roque neighborhood. This is the one where we had 24-hour drilling, and we had a specific sound wall around it, and we deemed it quite successful because we didn't get any, I didn't get any phone calls. And so the planning and execution of it was done very well. This is to provide the above-ground piping. It'll be screened, much in the same way the old well was, and this, again, also is part of the city's long-term water supply program. No, this is not a rendering of the new fire station. What I just saw Ron in Room 15, and we wanted to make sure that was clear, is that what this is, is that in order to do remodel of Fire Station Number 1, which you're all familiar with how it looks, is that it's going to be, the square footage needs exceed the amount of space that's available there, and as part of a facility, rather, a feasibility study looked at how do we accommodate that, and we concluded that, you know, adding square footage at that existing site was very expensive and very difficult. And so the idea came up with, well, let's move the administrative and fire marshal off-site, and this is a rendering of the muffler shop on Chapala where they could move to. And then with the administrative and fire marshal out of the fire station, then a seismic retrofit could proceed, and a modernization of the fire personnel at the site could proceed. Right now, we have cost estimates, and we're looking at how to fit all the work within the budget, and also looking at how to include green building features at all the sites. Now I'd like to move to the construction report summary. We completed six projects in the first quarter of the fiscal year, and they had, and so we anticipate for the entire year, a significant increase of what we've had in the past that may get up to $64 million. Here's a list of the projects that I'll be going over, and so I'll just skip through this and start looking at the construction sites. This is one of the 10 security control panels out at the airport. The airport has always monitored the security at the terminal itself. However, the security at the perimeter of the airport has had requirement for increased security. This project provided that. It is now monitoring 68 sites around the perimeter with cameras and controlled access. And that was, as you can see, a significant project, $1.8 million. This is a little modest project of $4 million. It's a new taxiway. Can't do too many things for, most everything at the airport costs a lot of money. And when you're talking about runways, this is another one of them, and this is a significant project that adds a taxiway that improves circulation at the main runway. That's on the left. Then on the right, as part of the project, also included a overlook for the Galita Slough. And this is located right at the freeway off-ramp at Sandsbit onto Moffett Road, if anybody's interested, and you can turn off and get a good sight of the slough. Back to, this is, back to town. This is the Punta Gorda Improvements. This is the Lower East Side neighborhood near the freeway and Sycamore Creek. Didn't have any sidewalk or curb and gutter, and this is a project that also complemented a Housing Authority project in the nearby. And we have a project that is coming to you next week, which will be a ward of some additional curb and gutter in the neighborhood at the Deluxe Trailer Park across the street to wrap it up. Also included will be in streetlights for the neighborhood. Local road rehabilitation. This shows the repaving of Chapala, and we use rubberized asphalt, which recycled, I don't recall the exact number of tires that were recycled, but it was, I think, like 1,000 kind of rings the bell. And it also, Transportation Planning Division took an opportunity to restrike the roadway and add a bike lane. Sheffield Reservoir. We'll have a video of that, so you'll see a lot more of this. There is a grand opening this Thursday for stakeholders and decision-makers, and I hope you can make it. It's kind of an exciting change of use. Here's another project out at the airport, replacing the Verhel Bridge, and you can see, originally it had a significant number of impediments in the channel there, and now it's a clear span, plus it's wider, modern access with pedestrian features going across from Fairview onto the airport site. Now I have some photos of projects in construction. Here is the relocation of Tequillatito and Canarios Creek, and that was quite a significant project. Went out there last week. There's a lot of wildlife about. We found a Tidewater Gobi that no one had found at this Galita Slough for years. For those of us that have been working on Mission Creek, we are always surprised that there wasn't any Tidewater Gobis at a Galita Slough, and sure enough, we found them. But it was quite a successful story. We were able to accommodate them and relocate them back into the slough, and it looks like it's a very successful project. Here is the Royal Borough Estuary at the end of Las Pecitas next to Cliff. I get a lot of comments just from the public just walking around, being the anonymous city engineer, and get a lot of positive compliments about this project. A lot of people really like it, looking forward to using the bridge over the daylighted Mesa Creek, and the civil work is completed, rather means all the grading, and landscaping is in progress. It's scheduled to be completed by the end of December and open to the public shortly. Here's the West Side Drain Summer Urban Runoff Facility. It's just, it's right next to Bonnet Park at the end of Victoria on San Andreas. The contractor is finishing up the interior piping. The site will be winterized, and so there won't be any vehicular access to the site, but pedestrians will, and it's being planned in coordination with a project that Parks and Rec is working on to put a new neighborhood park there. This is the Oak Park Bridge. It's going to, for those going to all the different ethnic festivals out of Oak Park, this will be a giant benefit. Going from the elbows and knees across the bridge, we'll have eight feet to go over, and also have good accessibility on each side, so of course, it does provide the ADA accessibility, but just for everybody, I would think it'll be a great circulation benefit. Oh yeah, the bridge itself is scheduled to be delivered this Friday. Here is Milpus Street beautification. It is to provide bull bouts at Milpus and Canopredito, as well as pedestrian lights from here all the way down to Quinientos. The bull bouts are complete. Had a delay in material delivery, so the additional pedestrian poles really won't be finished until January, but the holiday lighting circuit for the Milpus Parade will be in place for their parade. And here's the traffic signals at Santa Barbara and Ortega. I was about to ask the project manager what the status of this, and walked out of Shalub's after, after lunch. They were there. So they're being installed, and they hopefully will be operational next week. It'll initially just be on flash, and then they'll be working out the details of the actual timing, et cetera. Here is just a schematic of sanitary wet weather capacity improvements. What it will do is that it will significantly decrease the probability of wet weather overflows into the neighborhood on Spring Street next to Milpus. What's been happening is that during rainstorms, sewers become full, and periodically there has been overflows onto the street. This will significantly reduce the probability of that. The contractor worked 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to get the connection completed, closed the freeway off-ramp. We got a special encroachment permit from Caltrans to do that, and we successfully made that connection, and now the contractor is moving upstream, and we're looking forward to get that done before the end of the winter. Okay, now, I'd like to first move to the video presentation. Darn it, I was hoping I could use the remotes completely.
Sheffield Reservoir has been holding Santa Barbara's water for over half a century. Thanks to a $20 million state loan, the reservoir is getting a much-needed makeover.
The reservoir that was here was open and exposed completely to the elements, and we had an extremely difficult time. It was a daily challenge to make sure that the water that was in that reservoir, when it left the reservoir, was meeting state and federal standards.
The old reservoir will be replaced by two 6.5 million gallon tanks underground.
We have to get down about 50 feet deep for the vault, about 35 feet deep for the reservoirs themselves, and they're going to be pre-stressed concrete reservoirs, and so we're dealing with quite extensive excavation to get down to the bottom.
All dirt and rock on the construction site will be used in the re-grading of the new open space.
And so the idea is that we don't have to truck any of this dirt off-site. We don't have to bring any more rock on-site, and hopefully that we end up with a balanced design at the time to minimize the number of traffic trips.
There will be historic elements from the existing reservoir, like the parapet wall and other items that will be designated in the open space, like where the boundaries of the dam are today.
After construction, the historic Sheffield Filtration Building will remain on-site and be restored to its 1936 condition.
We will paint it its original color. We're going to remove a small addition that was put on the front of it in 1963, not change any of the landscape, the grass area, the big pine trees in the front will remain, so it'll look very similar to what it did when it was constructed.
We take for granted our tap water is safe, but getting it that way is no simple task. So in an effort to improve water safety, the city of Santa Barbara has begun construction on the Sheffield Water Quality Project, a process that started eight years ago. The old reservoir had a capacity of 40 million gallons and was built in 1917. Bob Sedevy has been supervising construction from the start.
When we dug here, we didn't know what we were going to find under a 70-year-old reservoir, how much water, and it could have just been a swamp, but it turned out to be fairly dry. We have to continue to pump water out, but the foundation went in without too much trouble.
Each of the new tanks is 186 feet in diameter and 36 feet high.
The top roof has just been finished as of last Wednesday. One quarter of it was poured last Wednesday. Took 40 concrete trucks. The walls are one foot thick, and as soon as it cures enough, we're going to put railroad tracks around it and have a complete system that goes around and wraps miles of wire around and then sprays concrete, like gunite, on top of that to really hold the whole thing together.
The front tank in the foreground, and that's completed, and that's going to be filled within the next month. The tank in the back is getting wrapped with steel. We have 356 wraps of steel around each tank in two different layers, and within the two tanks, we have 40 miles of wire, enough to go all the way to LA.
During construction, water is held in these temporary tanks.
They hold 1.5 million gallons each. So we have two at 1.5 now, and when these new ones come online at 6.5 million gallons each, then those get unbolted and hauled off-site.
When you think reservoir, you think of having to look at something like this. Well, the new Sheffield reservoir will be buried underground, and the result, a 32-acre passive open space.
The open water attracted about 1,000 or 2,000 crows every afternoon. They would come down and take their bath in our drinking water. So pretty well the decision was made by the group and the neighborhood and by us here personally that we could get away with not having the open body of water and would welcome an open space.
The new landscaping will include native plants that are currently incubating in Parma Park, and with a drought often on the horizon, the open space is incorporating the neighboring Firescape Garden to showcase more hardy plants.
If we end up coming into another drought, I think it might be important for people to see the examples that we can, how things will look.
Once the project is completed, it's going to be possible for people to take the road along the top of the reservoir over into the Firescape Garden as the walking road, and that'll get the traffic off of the street, and we'll have hiking trails and jogging trails, places to walk your dog. I think it's going to be an asset to the neighborhood. We're looking forward to the completed product.
The biggest highlight so far is we're on time and on budget.
Several parts of the project involve different aspects. The first one we're seeing here is the historic filtration building, which has been out of service since Kater was built in the 60s, and we have mothballed this by just enclosing it and putting it out of service. There is no use for the building now. The other thing that we've done here is built over a mile of trail. We have 500 trees going in, 35,000 plants, about half are in right now, and you can see the outline of the old reservoir. We've left the parapet walls up all around it to signify the old historic reservoir.
And that's the completion of the presentation. I'd like to compliment our city TV again for patching together three Inside Santa Barbara feature presentations, and I'd be very happy to answer any questions from council.
Okay, are there questions, Ms. Focconi?
Thank you. Thanks for all that. It's always amazing how much stuff is being done to the tune of enormous sums of money. It's extraordinary. Back on Taxiway M, and this may just be something I just have no idea about, because my eyes are usually closed on takeoff and landing. No. You said that on this new runway, that there was going to be an overlook onto the slough. Now, I guess that's great, but who is to be overlooking? Is it the people in the planes? Is it, can I go drive out there? Is it, can I go drive out there or I take a walk? Or what, how does that operate?
It's, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Falcone, it's right off of Moffett Road, right where Sandspit intersects Moffett, and you can drive over and park and view the slough.
But it's through a fence because civilians are not allowed onto the airport property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Just so it's clear, it's not part of Taxiway M. It's just, it was done at the same time as Taxiway M.
Okay, but it's a place for the public who can park off of the airport property to view the slough. Okay, not at the end of the runway. Okay, just to clarify.
Correct. Thank you for clarifying that.
The other question that I have is the bikeway under the freeway admission?
Yes.
Can you explain to me a little bit how you see that happening? Because I know that there are physical constraints with respect to the road and the walls of the overpass and all of that. So are we talking tunnel? What are we talking about here?
No, we are simply, what we're doing is narrowing the sidewalk. Right now, the sidewalk underneath the freeway and railroad structure is quite wide. I believe it's like over 10 feet. And as a result is that the roadway itself does not have any room for a bike, bikeway. So the plan is to narrow the sidewalk to provide enough space on the roadway to stripe in a bikeway on each side of the street.
So I remember a couple of years ago having this conversation. It was Mr. Barnwell actually that was asking some very critical geometry questions about how to achieve this. And so this is what you have decided to actually narrow the sidewalk there to provide for, because we're not going to be doing anything with the integrities of the walls of the overpass.
No, that's, that was the $20 million project of five years ago that who knows how much it's now we couldn't afford. But what we are doing to accommodate that comment and many others is that once you get out from the other side of those large structures, then we can accommodate the widening of the, widening the sidewalk back.
By taking some of that vegetation as we discussed.
Correct. By putting in a retaining wall and actually putting in street trees.
And the last question that I have has to do with the Haley and Delavina Bridge.
Yes.
And you mentioned the acquisition of a piece of property. I'm wondering whether or not that is the house on the southeast corner that has seen better days.
Yes.
It's pink.
Yes, includes that.
Now, the reason I ask, and I thought maybe that was the piece, but it's got a for sale sign on it. So what's going on there?
I don't know about the for sale sign, but we don't have the authority as part of this project to pursue right-of-way until the environmental is complete. So we are pushing forward as best we can to complete that. And a lot of it has to do with some review of historical features through the state, through the State Historical and Preservation Office, SHIPO.
For the bridge element, not the house.
Yes, yes. And so we have to complete all the environmental process and then once we get that clear, then hopefully we can, then we'll get the authority to move forward with right-of-way acquisition. But the right-of-way acquisition is such that it's whatever the market is. So we would be purchasing that at whatever that property is worth, whether it's sold or not.
At today's, yes, at today's value. Hopefully that'll still be in place come Wednesday. All right, thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Well, let's start with that. I think that Councilmember Falcone has a good point here. If this is for sale, we do have an RDA acquisition fund. We probably should contact the RDA staff and have them look into it. Even if we don't have all the processes done, whether to use that as right-of-way, nothing to stop the RDA from using this as an opportunity acquisition. In any case, you know, even if it doesn't turn out how we want it to, at least we have, would have that property. So I hope we'll, we'll at least look into that. It's easier for us to acquire it when it's on the market.
It is currently on the market.
Right. The second, the second question was also on the 101 bikeway, the Mission Street bikeway underneath the 101. I was just wondering if, if there is anything we can do to further speed that up. I know we saw that, we approved that as a body a while ago and you have scheduled, construction is scheduled for spring 2007. That's good, though it seems to me like we still have a couple steps that we need to get done very quickly to begin construction in spring 2007. And so I was just going to make the suggestion that we, if we're waiting on it, Caltrans permission, that we enlist our assembly members help. Beno Nava, who's now Chair of the Transportation Committee. So if there's anybody in state government that Caltrans will listen to, it'll be the Chair of the Transportation Committee. And then a question on our solar projects. Is the, is the solar project on the Cassique Street Fire Station, is that done? Is that complete?
I believe that is in progress and I'd have to report back to you from our Facilities Division as to the exact current status.
Okay. And then would, so would that also be true of the second solar project, the URS, one that we approved earlier this year?
Yes, I'd have to report back to you on that.
Okay. And then with the Fire Station 1 remodel, that doesn't include any roof repair, does it?
Well, actually, we are looking at any and all leads features or green building features. And we're looking at, you know, different ideas of, actually a very interesting one, especially at the old muffler shop. It has a curved ceiling and yes, we are going to have to replace that roof. And one of the main reasons is that it provides better structural integrity for the whole, for the whole building, for seismic retrofit. And so we have to pretty much reconstruct the roof in many ways. And one of the very interesting products that is being looked at is this membrane. It's like a roof membrane with solar features. And so it's pliable and so it's not the typical rigid solar panel that we're used to. It's a pliable item that we're investigating that could possibly be something that we could use on this facility.
That's great to hear. I just want to reinforce that I think this, that we didn't make a formal motion that day when we were discussing the fire station roof repair and solar project. I think there was, I remember at least four of us talking about the need that every time there's a roof repair in the city, that we'd like to see solar as part of that design for the roof repair. And, and then the, the last thing was on the Punta Gorda Volontario Sidewalk. I'm very pleased to see that in my father's neighborhood. That was, is that the kind of project that will be severely limited in doing in our sidewalk replacement if Measure D is not reauthorized?
Yes. The particular features of that project, you know, had some grant funding in it, but it's really a zero-sum game by, there's only so much money to do all that. And so by not being able to have Measure D funds available, it'd be very, much more difficult to do that type of project. Thank you.
Mr. Barnwell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When are we gonna, when are we gonna acquire the property at the corner of Bath and Ortega for the oft-discussed Pocket Park? When is that, what is the timetable for that?
I'll have to check with the redevelopment agency staff and get back to you on that.
If you would be so kind. And then the other, the other question I have is you have used the phrase "leads" to describe the retrofit of the muffler building. And my understanding of "leads" is that it's for new construction. And I, in my other conversations about retrofitting existing buildings, we have talked about the green building rating of one through three. I wonder, I don't want to bring it up to a motion, but I don't think I need to with this council. I think we need to start using the nomenclature correctly. And so whatever it is we're doing, I'd like to do it consistently. So if we, if, I think you're probably just using the word "leads" in a kind of a generalistic green building phrase, but I don't think that's going to work anymore. I think we're going to have to really talk about what it is we're doing and where we're taking those guidelines, if they are "leads" guidelines, or if they are green building guidelines, or I think internally in our Public Works Department, we have to begin to grapple with what it is rather than talking about it in this mushy way. Because Mr. Williams is correct, this council has unanimously decided that we're going to go in that direction. So I think it behooves us to begin to talk as professionals on these terms. So I would encourage us to do that from now on and, and to know what it is we're saying when we say that. But I also want to compliment you, as Ms. Falcone did, on the staggering amount of work that we do in the course of a year and all the millions and millions of dollars. And it is kind of odd that an entire bridge, Democratic Hospital is a couple $300,000 and a runway at the airport is 4.8 million. I mean, the runway just seems like it's like a parking lot, right? Like, how hard can it be? Versus building a bridge, which seems really tricky. And yet you have to reverse the law of common sense to determine what those numbers are. Anyway, many congratulations for all those achievements. Thank you.
I have one speaker and that is Michael Self. Okay, go ahead. It's just a quick follow-up.
And then Michael.
And it goes back to what Mr. Barnwell was saying in terms of, you know, the solar and the greening and all of that. I think part of that professional, responsible conversation has to do with the additional costs that will be incurred. And to think that the six or eight million dollar project that we were talking about several years ago for the improvements to Station 1 is going to, is a hard and fast cost without change is naive and inappropriate. So we need to really continue to slide the numbers along with sliding the innovations. And I'm for the innovations. I think we need to do this all with our eyes open, make sure that, you know, we know exactly what we're doing. So bring the costs along in a very real kind of way. Not as a way to say, oh, it's too expensive, we don't want to do it. No, in a way to say, this is expensive, this is what it's going to cost, and these are the values that we have in this community and this is why. So I think, I know that I'd like to keep that on track. Thanks.
And just, so far, we, I don't believe we've had firm policy direction. And one of the objectives this year is a part of the Sustainability Program is to come up with some criteria, both for new buildings and when we do rehabs and retrofits, to apply kind of some, when will we apply green elements? What's the cost-benefit ratios we'll be looking for? So we can make these kinds of decisions with our eyes open, weigh the various priorities we have. And so that's one, we believe, one of the objectives that, that we're going to try and have this year, to bring back a comprehensive policy document on, again, both new buildings and then when we do retrofits.
There's, sometimes it's possible that the costs aren't even more at some times. Sometimes you put in a skylight and it's even cheaper because the savings on the electricity, et cetera, et cetera. So the assumption that it's always more isn't true. But I think the cost is, as Ms. Falcone said, I think the cost is important that we look at, at that. I have a couple of questions unless you wanted to.
All right, just while, while we're on the subject, I, I think that, well, first of all, the US Conference of Mayors has endorsed a proposal championed by, at Mazra, that all-new construction and retrofits would exceed a goal of reducing energy consumption by 50%. And I've talked about that with many architects in this community. And they say you can do 40% without hardly batting an eye. And it's that, you know, with a little bit of effort, getting up to 50% is doable in just about any project. And I sincerely believe that that should be our goal. The, the US Conference of Mayors made that not just a goal, but a directive to implement on all building in the city, not just city buildings. So before we start talking about doing that to private builders, we should be doing it ourselves and leading by example. And I feel very strongly whether that's, whether, that's because we put a solar project on the top of our roofs or whether we just have superior insulation and, and, you know, LED lights and everything like that. Either way, whatever it is, the bottom line is we should be reducing that energy consumption. That's a directive that our mayor has, has signed on to and, and we should lead by, we should, we should follow that, that leadership.
I have a couple of quick questions. The ramps, the pedestrian ramps, I've noticed are now the two-way ramps instead of the one in the middle. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, Madam Mayor, are you talking about Santa Barbara and Ortega in particular?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, we, when we have a bulbout, the geometry is such that it makes the two-way ramps very easy.
Okay.
At the smaller radius ramps, that's much more of a challenge and we're developing means to do that wherever we can.
And then secondly, do we own the muffler shop?
Yes.
Didn't know we did. You were talking as if we did, so I'm assuming, but I just thought it was an interesting question. Well, that works for the fire department and that's good. And then the last thing that I have, and then we want to hear from Michael Self, is there's a big flood control district project on the west side right now. There was one before and now we've got one again and roads are cut off and so on. But I know it's a county project, but if we could have an update on that at some point, even by memo, it would be really good. I've had some complaints and I know people have gone out there and helped the folks because the roads are cut off or something like that. But, but we would, we would like to know about when it's going to be done and what stage it's at. Thank you. Okay, Michael Self. Sorry to make you wait so long. We're just talking today because we have a short agenda.
That's okay. I'm always learning. Thank you, Mayor and Councilpersons, for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Michael Self. I'm President of Santa Barbara for Safe Streets. It's nice to see that the city is doing so many things for energy saving. I think it's really great and that will spur the technology as they see more interest. So I think that's commendable. The items that I wanted to talk about weren't in the presentation and I guess everything wasn't. It was about the Public Works Streets and Transportation. It is in the agenda item and it's the Neighborhoods for Livable Streets in the St. Francis area. And I don't know who to talk to. Maybe I'll try to grab Pat before he leaves. But at one time was the Neighborhood Transportation Management Program. And it morphed. Now it's Neighborhoods for Livable Streets. And I guess I'm just kind of curious why it had name change. And regarding that, many of our members who live up in that area and with the proposed St. Francis building that's going on are very concerned that possibly we could get a reprieve on those bulbouts that will be in the area by the trucks. By the EIR, they're saying that there will be 50 to 60 trucks a day going in those streets. And according to some of the information that I received from Public Works, the installation of the temporary ones was $4,333 or something. So it's not a great deal of money that's been put into the temporary ones. So we'd like a reprieve and we'd like to, we've been trying to contact them to find out about turning radiuses for that because that is a concern about those areas. And then about the safe routes to schools that also wasn't in this presentation, we've done a lot of research. We have reams and reams of stuff. And I know you have the whole city to look after, so we've been sort of laser focusing. And I think some of the projects are good and well-merited. We're not just obstructionalists and say, no, don't do anything. But the part that does concern us greatly is the bulbouts. There is no research data that we have been able to unearth, and we check all sides, that says bulbouts make things better for pedestrians or cyclists. They only cite that it shortens the crosswalk distance. The degree of danger that it exposes to cyclists many more times overrides a shortened distance of a crosswalk. There is much data to support the added danger to cyclists for bulbouts all over our streets. And this is called safe route to school. for bulbouts all over our streets. And this is called "safe route to school." Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Williams.
Well, I do think there is a good point, Ian, that we should be very sure of the value of bulbouts. I see how they work in the downtown area to make pedestrians more safe. But I, I still don't quite see how they will be improved bicycle safety unless there's a bikeway through them as opposed to on the outskirts of them. And I'm open to, I'm still open on this question, but I really would, would love, not today, but over the next couple months, to hear from staff the kind of data that supports this as a, as a safety measure. Because I think bicycle safety, particularly for, for children, should be one of our highest concerns. And I know that the intention, and we will do some great things with our, our transportation improvements in that regard, but I want to make sure that everything we're doing is improving it. And so before we move on, on some of those projects, I'd love to see that, that data.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to second that for Mr. Kelly and Mr. Nissages. There's something intuitive that doesn't quite work in my gut. I'm not an engineer, but I need more explanation. I mean, I want to make sure that the bikes really are safe. And it gives me a little bit of the willies. I think this self makes a good point.
Yeah. I understand the point, and I agree that we need to see that. But I know very intimately the Roosevelt School corner, Laguna, 1990 Laguna, Laguna Mission. And that bulbout had to have made a huge difference, but I know what you're talking about with the bicyclists, because I'm a bicyclist too. But anyway, it'll be good to have that. But I think sometimes, sometimes those kids need to feel safe in crossing the street, and that's what it does for them. And it did slow the cars down a lot up there. They would just zip through that stop sign. They don't do that anymore. But I'm, I'm not saying they're all perfect, you know? So it'd be interesting to see the data. Okay, we have, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Barnwell.
One last question, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Kelly, I don't mean to put you on the spot on this, but the intersection of Ortega and Santa Barbara Street at the noodle school there, right by the locksmith shop?
Yes.
I had the serendipitous opportunity to talk with the project lead carpenter, who suggested to me that the ADA ramps that they put in on the east side took him twice as long to form as they would have had the ADA ramp simply been the entire arc of the curve with two distinct approaches, north-south along the Santa Barbara Street and east-west along Ortega, rather than putting that little hump in the middle of that arc of that radius curve. I know that the Chairman of the Multiple Sclerosis Governmental Relations Society, Ms. Van Meter, is of an opinion, and her group is of an opinion, that that design that we have there is, may not be what they would like to see. And then when I see that across the street, we have yet a different design. We have almost three different designs at that one. We certainly have two. So I want to ask the question, are we doing an outreach to the ADA groups? And have we come to a universal pattern that we would like to install? Bulbouts, no bulbouts? What is our policy on that? Because we don't seem to be doing it consistently.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Barnwell, this intersection was, was a bit unique, is that we had a standard intersection of the singular ramps. However, as part of the, when we brought it back to our Historic Landmarks Commission, the idea was is that we can improve the pedestrian access there by putting in bulbouts. And so the bulbouts were added as part of the final construction. When we have the bulbouts, we have room, well, let me take a step back. Is that, as part of the recently approved Pedestrian Master Plan, my understanding is, in discussion with their Transportation Planning Division, is that the dual ramps is a preferred design.
Preferred by whom?
The Pedestrian Master Plan. And so we were following that direction at this location, and the advice of essentially our client, Transportation Planning. It's true that the cost of a dual ramp is more than a singular ramp. In fact, it's approximately, from some cost estimates we've done, approximately twice. I asked a similar question as part of the internal staff review of the Pedestrian Master Plan, as far as the process it went through. And it did go through both Transportation Circulation Committee and our, our Disability or Access Advisory Committee to Staff also. However, next Tuesday, an item we brought before council regarding the update of our accessibility documents, our ADA transition plan. One of the specific items of scope of work within that new contract is also a review of our public right-of-way access. And one of the items that we intend to discuss with this architect, who's really is an expert in public and private accessibility, is to review this topic, is that, let's look at this again. I mean, what are some policies and practices that we can kind of put our hands on a little bit better to look at this? You know, is it worth the extra cost to do this versus, especially in a zero-sum game, to have opportunity to build more ramps versus ramps that are twice as expensive, is it worth, worth it? And so built in as part of that is an examination of, of that question.
Well, that's very encouraging. Thank you very much. I look forward to that. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Well, I've just been reflecting a little bit on, on my conversation about sustainability, that we've been engaged in, and energy usage. And I, I guess I would ask staff, if, if it is not clear how much of a priority this is, and we need formal direction, let's have that conversation. We can't today because it's not agendized as such. But we should, we should determine whether we're always going to put solar, and we're always going to look at solar on our rooftops when we're, when we're replacing. We should look at what we consider our minimum baseline for energy reduction whenever we build new buildings or, or do remodels. And if that's not clear enough, if it's not clear enough from the general sense that you get from us, then I think we should make that a formal policy.
And I think it's clear that the council wants to do, you know, all sustainability practices whenever we can. The real question is, is whenever we can, and what does that mean? And a good example would be, when we looked at the library, as you recall, I think it was $750,000, and the savings was $25,000 or $30,000 a year, and the payback was 30 or 40 years. And in that point, we came to council, and we talked about, and we said, we don't think it makes sense to do it. And so what we, what we, what we plan, I mean, every time we're doing a project, we're saying, you know, and the staff knows this very strongly, is we have to look at, where can we do photovoltaics? Where can we do other elements, green elements? And when in doubt, the benefit goes to doing them. And what we're just trying to do is come up with some kind of a policy that looks at it so we, we can deal with those kind of trade-offs in a rational way. Because if, I don't think the intention of the council is, is do it no matter what it costs, even if it means sacrificing other elements of the building or square footage. And so what we're trying to do is, is not just, and it's not just solar voltaics, it's other things as well, is look at that. In many cases, as the mayor mentioned, it, it makes a lot of sense. And we have to look at lifecycle costs, and, you know, in many cases, the lifecycle costs justify it. We're just trying to come up with both in new buildings, and also when we do, you know, if we do $100,000 retrofit to a building, what do we do? If we do a, you know, $20,000 retrofit, what do we do? And kind of come up with some kind of policy that we can work with. But in the meantime, everybody knows, this council wants to do it wherever we can. And I think we've gotten that message loud and clear.
I, I think that it's good that you talked about the, the library project, because it turns out now, you know, a couple years after we discussed that, that the staff analysis was wrong. The baseline we used for, for the growth in energy costs was 2% or 3% in that staff report. And I believe Mr. Barnwell and myself warned the, I guess, made the prediction that that was going to be very factually inaccurate. It turned out being, being factually inaccurate. The payback would have been far different with the kind of energy cost increases we've seen in the past couple years, if any of it continues at that rate or even close to that rate. And I think personally, if I was to make that choice again, I think I would choose differently, because we've seen a growth in energy costs, and not just a growth in energy costs, a growth in the awareness of the social and environmental costs of not making those moves. And, and I think that we need to, to make it clear that we need to discuss this every time there is a project that could be a conceivable roof replacement or solar project in the city.
Well, I think it's a good idea to review what we've been doing, you know, every once in a while. Mr. Barnwell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For, you and I, and I believe Helene are sitting on that new subcommittee that we just put together. And I share Mr. Williams' frustration, but I, I do know that Ms. Johnson is working on putting together a policy for us. And just to give everybody a timeline on that, I think, Mr. Armstrong, if you would please kick in here, I believe that our internal city, city analysis of how we're going to become more sustainable, our department-by-department analysis will be ready, one of the first ones, one of the first iterations is going to be ready just before Christmas. We'll have an analysis sometime in January, and then Ms. Johnson is going to give the council an update on where we are on this stuff. And we're going to be getting quarterly updates. And the first step in this process is for the city buildings to get themselves in order. I, I want to tell Mr. Williams, I'd like to have him kick in his, his opinions here in this matter, because January, I believe, will be our first, the council's first report back on our sustainable cities progress. And I think we do, at that point, need to establish some rough guidelines that we're going to operate by. So we're going to say, well, we want solar. And, you know, cost, I agree, the, the library was, was very expensive. But we've got to change our wicked ways as quickly as we possibly can change them. And I know that Ms. Johnson's working on it, and so we're supposed to get, be getting a report in January. Am I correct on this, Mr. Armstrong?
And I'm not sure where the building policies are. There's a whole series, 10 or 15 objectives of things to accomplish, and where that is in that. And, and we'll go through those objectives. I think we were going to actually, we were finalizing those objectives, but there's a whole green purchasing policies is one, and a whole variety of things. And I know that, that the building policies is a part of that. And I, I guess I have to say, you know, I'm not going to, you know, I was never, nobody's come to me and said, your analysis on the solar roof was, was wrong or factually incorrect. Maybe one could argue about the assumptions. We try to do, we try and do intellectually honest analysis based on the data we have, and, and let the, let the facts speak for themselves. And, you know, that's the instructions to the staff, don't cook the books one way or the other. And, and so we, we're going to continue to try and do that. And in the end, if the council makes the policies on this thing, and we'll respect those policies. We're just trying to make sure that, that there's integrity in our analysis of these kinds of things, so that you can trust what we're doing, and not try and cook the books one way or the other.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Kelly. A little bit longer report than usual, but we appreciate it. Okay, could you read the last two items? Because we're going into closed session.
Item number 13, conference with legal counsel pending litigation. And item number 14, conference with real property negotiator.
Okay. And we will adjourn out of that meeting, because there's nothing to report out of them. Thank you. And go vote, everybody.